I would like to call to order the Malibu City Council's special meeting of October the 27th, 2021. This meeting is held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic and we appreciate everyone's patience as we navigate this Zoom meeting process. Council members and city staff are participating from remote locations and all votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. At this screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on a particular item. Those who wish to speak during the meeting should follow the instructions at malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. Please make sure you visit malibu city.org/virtualmeeting early to sign up to speak and download the Zoom application. The city clerk will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called, so you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Council members, if you have comments to make during the meeting, please raise your hand, or I will, and I will call on you in turn, so we can make our discussion clear for the record and the public. May I have a roll call?
Councilmember Fair?
Here.
Councilmember Pearson? Councilmember Euring?
Here.
Mayor Protem Silverstein?
Here.
Mayor Crisanti?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. May I have an approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
A second?
I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda. Seeing no hands, I'm going to ask for a, the role to be taken.
Councilmember Pearson?
That is a yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Euring?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Crisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
May I have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on October 21st, 2021.
Okay. Item number 1A is city manager recruitment. And the object here is to submit, solicit public participation. Do we have any, any comments from the public or people? Bruce, I'm sorry.
I see your hand.
That's okay. Thank you, Paul. I understand there's very few people signed up, so I was hoping we wouldn't put them on a, on a clock and just let them speak. I think that we can trust the residents to keep their remarks succinct. Is that okay?
Mayor Crisanti, we do, we have nine speakers, just so you know that.
If, if somebody wants to say something and they can't finish, I'm certainly desirous of letting them speak. Bruce?
Thank you.
Is Steve, Steve, I see your hands up?
Are we going to give the, are we going to give the public any background in terms of the number of candidates we have or some insight as to what's going on in this process?
My understanding that would come during the council comments.
I mean, if,
if, if there's some other report that someone had planned to give at this point, I'm unaware of it.
No, I'm just saying, you know, if the public is going to comment, it'd probably be good to let them know what they're commenting on, just as a thought.
Okay.
Well, this, this, now, this is a somewhat complicated matter, since there's confidentiality issues. Perhaps John Cotty could, could give a very, very brief report that he believes is legally appropriate.
Sure. Mayor Crisanti, members of the council, good evening and members of the public. Councilmember Pearson and Mayor Protem Silverstein have been working diligently to try and bring back a series of candidates through an executive recruiter that has been approved by the council. And that process is ongoing. A brochure was prepared and mailed out and posted in a number of different places. And the city has, that application period has closed. The city recruiter has received several applications. They have not been presented to the full city council yet, so I would not be prepared to comment on the names or the, or the numbers at this point in time. Those names and numbers will be coming to the council in very short order, but the council, the ad hoc committee that's kind of handling the selection process from a recommendation standpoint, has wanted to get some public feedback on the types of city manager that the public, quite frankly, wanted to see the council hire. So the point of this meeting was to give the public the opportunity to, to talk to you five about what they want to see in the next city manager candidate. Once you have that information, once you're armed with that information, I think it would be easier for the five of you to, to select a candidate that is both palatable to you and to the public. So I think that was the point of tonight's meeting. It was really to give the public an opportunity to just tell you who they think the next candidate should look like, what qualities they should have, what skill set, what kind of background. You had a city manager for a very long period of time. I think it was five years and then one even longer before that. So this process doesn't happen very often, so that these councilmembers Silverstein and Pearson wanted to give you an opportunity, give the public an opportunity to kind of weigh in on what they believe the next candidate should look like.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
I see Karen's hand is raised.
Thanks, Paul. Just in case anyone forgot, councilmember, or excuse me, Mayor Protem Silverstein did state the number of applicants to date at a previous meeting. In fact, it was on the radio this morning. So I'm not sure why that would be a secret.
The number isn't a secret. I just don't, I don't know it off the top of my head. It's, I think it's, I think it's well over 30, if I'm not mistaken.
That was the number.
Again, the names, the names and backgrounds and places of current employment for them would not be appropriate.
Sure, of course. Okay, I'm just talking about the number.
Okay. Mikey, I see your hand.
Is this our, is this our comment time? Are we commenting or?
I don't think it's our comment time. I think we're supposed to be hearing from the public at this point, based on the paper I have in front of me, but.
Okay.
Kelsey, do we have anybody waiting to address us?
Yes, we actually have eight speakers signed up at this point. There were two duplicate, there was one duplicate. We have Norman Haney, Lloyd Ahern, John Maza, Howard Redsky, Richard Gibbs, Mary Ann Riggins, Craig Hill, and Ryan. And Mayor Crisanti, would you like me to run a timer for reference or just have their names up on the screen?
Uh, I, I think that running a timer is not unusual and we should do it. And if somebody needs more time, I think we should be generous with them.
Understood. Our first speaker will be Norm Haney.
Hi, Norm, are you in the room?
I am indeed. Thank you for the opportunity to address the city council on this issue. I think it's extremely important that the person that is selected as a city manager has an understanding, a firsthand understanding of what all of the different departments in the city does and has a, a culture of hard work. Now, I've been involved in as many as 37 cities in my 45 years' career, and I've never known a city that has as many employees, in fact, all the employees that I'm familiar with, including the new ones, have a culture of hard work. Many of the planners do not go home until late. If they are at home when they're doing the work, they work late, they feel a responsibility to the city and to the director of their particular department. So I, I believe that a city manager should understand exactly what goes on in each department, whether it's geology, health, public works, planning, all of the departments. They should have a background which they understand. I also think that because they are, because the city manager answers to the city council and is actually the common link between the city council and the rest of the departments, the city manager has the obligation to direct the work by each of the departments to help the city accomplish the goals which are specified by the city council. They should not be political. The politics in the city should be handled by the city council and not by the city manager. I, I think, I think that joint meetings with different departments might be important to figure out how they can speed up the work, what, what, what type of, of things that they're doing that they might not need to do. You know, finally, they need to understand, they need to be empathetic towards the hard work that each one of the departments does. And finally, they need to understand finances. Now, as somebody in the business of land development, I know that time is money. And I'm willing to pay more if I can get things done faster. And, you know, there are other people that feel the same way, that are just like me. And that, and the extra money can be used to hire more people in the departments which need them the most. I have nothing but respect for the people that work for the city of Malibu. And, you know, tho, those are my comments. I'll be available for questions if you have any.
Thank you very much, Norm.
Our next speaker is Lloyd Ahern.
Hi Lloyd, are you available?
Yeah, can I, I just got on here. Excuse me. Can you call me a couple of speakers forward? I'm, I just, I just got on and I'm not prepared to speak at this moment. Can you call me in, in two speakers forward?
Can we rotate him down the list a bit?
Yeah, we'll circle back to Lloyd. Our next speaker is John Maza.
Hi, John, are you available? John Maza?
John, I believe you're on an iPad. You should see it pop up. There you go.
Okay, I'm unmuted.
You're on.
Okay.
Were you here? Yeah.
Okay, obviously, the very first, very first and most important is they have to know how to manage and manage people and have some experience at it, not just say they know how to manage. They have to also know how to do long-range planning, which is something we lack. We have not had a general plan review in 30 years. And we very rarely, if ever, do long-term planning, which is getting critical in Malibu now. I believe they must have some coastal experience, since our future, with sea rise, is going to be greatly affected by coastal input. And that may not, that may not eliminate somebody without coastal experience, but it is almost essential, knowing from the planning commission what's going to happen to us. A very important thing is they have to reestablish the public trust in the city government, which, in my opinion, is, is at a low, since I've lived in Malibu. They must, they must actually prove that they have the credentials rather than say them. They, they also have to understand that our greatest threat right now is we've lost 34% of our population in 10 years, and it's continuing to decline for various reasons, but mainly commercial reasons. And we have to turn that around, or we're going to lose our schools, and that'll be the end of Malibu, as far as I'm concerned as a community. And that's an important thing. How do you turn this situation around? They must be willing to enforce ordinances. We are in, partly in the position we're in is because every major change in Malibu has been initiative-driven by the public. And we get ordinances like dark skies, which are completely ignored. And you may say it's not completely ignored, but when it takes eight years for the public to get something done like dark skies and, and, or denacides, and then it never happens, that's where you lose trust in the public. They also have to have, hello?
Sorry, John, someone else was unmuted. You can go ahead.
Okay. They also must understand that we have a general plan. And we, and it's part of our municipal code. And it's mainly environmentally based and citizen-oriented. And they've got to be very familiar with that and use that as a goal, rather than ignoring it. And they must also understand that we're, we're a city that's basically split 60/40. Whenever we do an initiative on environmental issues or ordinances, and in a year, they're going to get reviewed by a new city council. And if they don't hit the ground running, they may only be here a year. So that's an important thing when you want to hire somebody who you want to stay for 10 or 20 years, is they've got to be committed to understand what the public wants, what the council wants, and to follow through. We've had a history of city managers who decide what they're going to do and sometimes listen to what the public says. So it's, it's, it's not just, as Norm says, managing and making things faster and easier. It's, it's understanding why Malibu is shrinking and where we need to go and lead us that direction. Thanks.
Thank you, John. Who do we have next?
Our next speaker is Howard Redsky.
Hi, Howard, are you in the room?
I am. Good evening, mayor and city council. And Mikey and Bruce, thanks for all your hard work. And my three cents is, as we all know, we don't own PCH or the beach, which are two of our biggest assets. We get to maintain it and pay for it, but we don't own it. That means we have to deal with outside agencies. We also have to deal with Sacramento, coastal, Caltrans, regional water, and many more. This, in my opinion, means that the new city manager must have these relationships established over years, day one, because to acquire them takes years. And we don't have years, especially with homeless and our new situations all around the city. Also, they need to have leadership skills with a good work ethic, because good people follow the leader. And if the leader doesn't do it, why should they? They must be articulate. So whether us, the citizens, like what's going on or not, they need to be able to get it across so that we all understand what's going on. They must be politically savvy, because we deal with so many different agencies, politicians, and government agencies, that it's a necessity. They must be financially savvy, because we live and die by our bond rating and how much money we can borrow to do the things that the citizens would like done. And they must understand the makeup and policies of the city, because it's very complex, as we know. So I think there's, there's got to be a system put in place where you guys are sure that they understand. They don't just pretend to understand, because it's easy to pretend. But here, you get thrown in quick, fast, and hard, and it's not so easy. And then they have to understand that in the end, we're a city, a small city, and we're made up of people. And not everybody has the same opinion, but they have to understand how to communicate with all of us and not alienate any of us. Thank you very much for the time to speak and good luck in finding this person.
Thank you very much, Howard. Who's next, please?
Our next speaker is Richard Gibbs.
How's it going? You guys hear me?
We can hear you, Richard.
Um, mine's pretty straight ahead. I don't know what the legalities are of this, but I'm sure you've all heard time and time again, one of the biggest complaints that I hear around town all the time from people and see it on Nextdoor and so on, is how much of the city staff doesn't live here and doesn't really understand the culture of Malibu. So I would put forth that I think in order to engender the trust of the residents of Malibu, the best move would be to hire, if possible, a resident of Malibu and somebody with considerable history in the culture of Malibu, meaning environmental issues, the, the ocean, the surf, the, the arts. These are all very important to most residents of Malibu. So that's pretty much it. That's my, that's my two cents. If you can find somebody who really knows Malibu. I think a lot of the other things that we're talking about here are kind of a given. You better have leadership skills. You better be articulate. You should be good on a microphone. All of those things, you've got to be able to handle if you're going to be a manager of any sort. But our history is that we don't have, and we haven't had somebody who really understands, really knows Malibu and lives here and has been here for many years. That's it. It's all I got.
Thank you, Richard. I, I've just received a message that, that there's no feed on malibu city.org video or the YouTube channel. Can someone check that, please?
It was pretty difficult to navigate to here for what it's worth.
So you can, you've got video though, right? I mean, you can see me right now.
Oh, we are up on YouTube. YouTube is just having some issues, but Zoom should be accessible to everybody.
Okay, all right.
And Channel 3 is running.
Okay. Very good. Okay. Thank you. Can we rejoin this meeting already in progress? Who's our next speaker?
Our next speaker is Mary Ann Riggins.
Hi, Mary Ann, are you available?
Hi, can you hear me all right?
We can hear you.
Hi, I'm in the unique position. I'm a longtime resident, but I'm also a longtime employee of the city of Malibu. I want to thank the previous speakers for their kind words to staff. And I wanted to just highlight that in addition to excellent communication skills, you really need to look for somebody who has a history of positive employee engagement and somebody who's going to create a culture that's going to want employees to work at the city of Malibu. Unfortunately, because of the economics and how unaffordable Malibu is to live in for most people, you've got a lot of employees commuting, sometimes from long distances. And you want to commit, keep that commitment level up and really have them engaged. And that starts at the top with somebody who creates just an environment that is welcoming and almost a family atmosphere. And we have had that in the past, and it would be great to continue that going forward. I think that, you know, definitely somebody who has experience with environmental and coastal issues, it's going to be extremely important, as always, and somebody who's familiar, who's working with a small town and navigating with the big city problems and functioning with the state agencies and county agency. So thank you for all the time and effort in putting into this, and I look forward to the results. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. I'm sorry for the interruption. Who do we have next?
Our next speaker is Craig Hill. Alex, I just want to confirm, we are recording and broadcasting and can continue, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Craig Hill.
Hey, Craig. Are you available? Craig, are you available?
There I am. You hear me now?
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Yeah, good evening, mayor and council and staff. Thanks for this, holding this public hearing on this. I'm not sure what would be most helpful for you to hear. I have some notes. Let me just first underscore a few words that others have said so far. Norm mentioned broad departmental background. John Maza, long-range planning and coastal experience. Howard established relationships with outside agencies. Mary Ann talked about culture. I would underscore all those things. First, let me say, I think Stephen McCleary's doing well. It seems like he's learned a lot about Malibu in a short time. He's responsive. I sent him an email on Saturday night. He emailed me back Sunday morning. So I imagine the ideal city manager could be doing better, but I don't have a list of perceived shortcomings. So anyway, this candidate should uphold the vision and mission statements. It seems a lot of the battles in town are between those who'd honor the requirement to preserve rural character versus those who'd be quite happy to have the whole place feel like Beverly Hills by the sea. So in that regard, yeah, like Richard said, it would be helpful to have someone who's lived here a long time, knows the city and its history well enough to understand that we're a city for more like structural reasons, not because we have some vision that involves more bright lights and concrete and nominally visitor-serving retail spaces that turn out to be empty. The candidate should be clear that they're working for the residents first and foremost. That means having, being able to put developers second, and short-term rental entrepreneurs and commercial event people and tourists second. They, they need to be able to know that it's the residents who they're working with and for. Transparency is important, you know, and we've, I don't know if we still have this 30-day email policy, but really, you know, it should be like a 10-year email policy. They should be thinking about building institutional memory, ways for the city to understand better what it's done in the past. They should be finding ways to make the government more user-friendly for residents. Like, I have some ideas about how to revamp the notices that go out on planning applications, or the emails that go out announcing council and commission meetings. Instead of having a link that you have to click through several pages to finally get to the agenda, there should be a bullet point list of the agenda right in the email. So busy people can just look at it and go, oh, yeah, yeah, I should weigh in on that meeting. And sort of, leading toward wrapping up here, I, I think the manager needs to be, needs to keep track of the money and the bond rating and all that, but that's not the fundamental priority. The job is to help the staff keep the community running smoothly as a community. So, and again, I think that's why it's really important to have somebody who knows the city well. And so, you know, maybe the bottom line is that the bottom line should not be measured foremost in dollars, but in community well-being. So let's make sure we have somebody that, that really gets that deeply. Thanks.
Thank you, Craig. Who do we have next?
Our next speaker is Ryan Embry.
Hi, Ryan, how are you? Are you there?
I'm here. Lloyd Ahern was going first.
All right, we can circle back to Lloyd Ahern next and then come back to Ryan. One moment.
Lloyd, are you available?
Yeah, I'm available. I think the permanent city manager qualif, qualifications, we need someone who can hit the ground running. And I, there's only three people that I know right now that can hit the ground running, that we know knows everything that we need. It's Rob DeBeau, Lisa, and we need a, a person that really knows Malibu. And what's happened now is that people are looking for something that doesn't exist. Lisa, Riva knew everything. And now we're looking for somebody that knows the coastal commission, knows Caltrans, knows the tribalness of this town, knows all the things. And we're not going to find that person. Riva's gone. We found a way to get rid of her, you know, and that person knows who he is. But now we have to find a person that, you know, they say, well, we'll find somebody inside Malibu. We're not going to find somebody inside Malibu. We're going to find somebody inside City Hall, just like when, when our, when our manager left, we had Riva to take over. We need somebody with, inside our city manage, our city right now to take over and keep us covered. Because if you bring somebody from the outside and try to figure out the tribalness of this town, we're going to be really lost. So I, I'm saying we've got people bright side inside our city council, inside our city government this moment, that can take over. that can take over. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Lloyd. Who do we have next?
And next we'll go back to Ryan.
Hi, Ryan. Are you available?
Yes, I am. Um, I, I've heard a lot of the other speakers and, and so my list will be shorter. I think what was very clear from what has occurred over the last eight years and so forth is that Malibu needs some fresh approach to decision-making. Uh, you can call that reform if, if you want to get political about there, but we need a city manager who's non-political and willing to communicate with residents in all departments and everyone who, who craves the communication. Because we are such a small city, we have enormous talent, we have engaged citizenry. And we need a city manager who can count to more than three. We need a city manager that can count to six. There's five council members and then there's the public. And we need consensus building. And we've had city managers that don't do that. We've had city managers that did do that. We've had people like Ray Taylor. We've had Bruce Sprague. We've had, um, Dr. Harry Peacock. Uh, we were lucky to have him as long as we did. Those people brought experience, fresh approach, almost built-in audit mentality on how to perfect and improve. If you hire within, that doesn't happen. It's same old, same old, political, same old thing. And we need someone who knows how to build consensus and how to lead and not just to fall into place. There's been power struggles back and forth over the years in Malibu and we need a fresh clean sheet. We don't need, uh, hire from one camp or this person isn't leaning in this direction. So let's go with them and maintain a political bent. That's been Malibu's downfall. A city manager needs to monitor staff, get to know them and the departments. Of course, know what the departments all do, um, but needs to learn the strengths of each city employee and to build on those determined individual strengths to maximize the potential of each of the members of the city's team. We need to not reinvent the wheel, not lead through intimidation or manipulation orchestration, but instead cooperation, coordination, effectuate those goals of the city. We don't need a know-it-all. We need somebody who can find out it all quickly and utilize the resources of the staff and the citizens so that we don't repeat the mistakes of the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Do we have any other speakers?
Yes, we have Jefferson Wagner.
Terrific. Jefferson, are you available?
Jefferson, you should have a pop-up asking you to unmute.
I'm unmuted now, I believe.
You are. Welcome.
Thank you, Paul, and thank you, council members, for your time and your consideration on these valuable topics for the whole community. I just wanted to make a quick motion of interest to you as you deliberate through this tough time of selecting a city manager. It's been up and down in the past. We've had some terrific city managers. We've had some that have not done a complete job. It's just my opinion. One thing that we want to remember is how to communicate with the public. Currently Steve has done a pretty good job of following up on the weekly, uh, updates, which I find most valuable as a, as a person of the community. And I wish to remind you that myself and one other person installed that about four to five years ago. And Riva Feldman followed through with that and made it part of Malibu City operations that you go to each department head, ask for a one-liner or a five-liner for their week ahead's work and what would interest the people of Malibu a week ahead of time. And Steve McCleary's done a pretty fair job of that. So I think that needs to continue. Whomever you pick has to know the community well. Whoever you pick has to know how to travel the community and who to deal with and how to deal with it. As the last speaker mentioned in better words, you need somebody that has grassroots knowledge of Malibu. That's how you can do it. As far as other things that you consider as management, you're very aware of it. The qualifications are not going to be everything that everybody wants when you make these decisions, but you are the ones that deliberate and you are the ones that concur and make the vote. And I wish you good luck in this, but you need to come up with all considerations, not just a few. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jefferson.
Mayor Grisanti, that was the last speaker sign-up I had and I don't see any hands raised in Zoom, so that concludes public comments.
Thank you very much. I think that brings us to council comments and discussion. And I'm looking for a hand and I see Karen's hand.
Thanks, Paul. Uh, thanks to all the speakers. Uh, it's interesting. I made notes in preparation for this meeting. And as, uh, you were speaking, I was highlighting things that I had put in my notes that many of you, uh, said. So that's good. A lot of things we're thinking the same way on. I know people know, uh, but I think it's, uh, it's worth stating again. The city manager is the chief executive officer of this organization and answers to the council. The council answers to the community, obviously, and that's what happens when we're elected. I'd like to go through my list. It's not in any particular order. And excuse me if I'm repeating what many of you said, uh, but I think it's good to know we're thinking the same way. I do agree with Lloyd. We need somebody who can hit the ground running. This is not a city where somebody should be learning on the job. It's too complicated. Uh, I definitely agree with, uh, Norm. We some, but need somebody with a strong work ethic, leadership skills. Somebody who is very well-connected. We've got, uh, our other cities that we deal with, not just the cog, but other surrounding cities. Obviously, the county, all the agencies, the state, at times the federal government. Uh, we do need somebody with experience as a city manager and by all means in a coastal city. Yes, we need somebody, uh, John Maza, who can look at long-range planning, uh, environmental issues. Uh, we've got some very serious public works projects coming up. Phase two of the wastewater project, uh, the Pacific Coast Highway projects, uh, our public safety issues, disaster preparedness. We always obviously have to be ready for wildfire, evacuation, homelessness. Uh, and I think we need somebody, we do have still several vacancies here at the city. We need somebody who's good at staff development, at hiring, evaluating, retaining people. And I do agree with what Mary Ann said, a welcoming atmosphere. Uh, we do need somebody who's good at budget manage, management and has financial expertise. Craig Hill, um, I do appreciate your comments, but I disagree with you that the financial issues are secondary. We can't provide services to the residents here without a strong financial position. So, uh, we disagree on that one, but that's fine. Uh, we do have, uh, our undeveloped commercially zoned land that the city bought in 2018, which is about 30 acres. And, um, hopefully we will have the budget to do things with that land, uh, as was the discussion before the Woolsey Fire. We do need somebody, uh, good news, bad news, who's available 24/7. That's just the nature of this job and I'm sure Steve could attest to that, uh, in the short time that he's been with the city. Um, and I agree, this is a small town. Many people know each other. Many people have lived here for decades and they expect to know the council members, the city manager, the staff, and, and I expect that for them as well. So, uh, that's about it for me. Um, and I do agree, I think more than one person said, we need somebody with knowledge of every department. Whatever city they're coming from. We need the city manager to be the department head, the partner of each department head and work with them, uh, on getting all of our goals accomplished. So, uh, that's what I have to say for now. And, oh, and for everyone who has asked for a local person, I understand that sentiment. Um, I know we can't talk about it tonight, but I am curious to know how many local Malibu residents have applied. I would love to see many of them, uh, in this applicant pool. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Who's ready to go next? Mikey?
Yeah, I'm glad to go.
Thank you.
I, uh, have a question for Mr. Cuddy. Is there, uh, I don't know, is there any reason not to say how many Malibu applicants did or apply or not apply?
Only to the extent it would give away maybe where they, who they are, where they're, where they're from or where they work. Um, and to be quite honest with you, I don't know. I'd have to go back and research that.
Why? I know the answer is zero. So, um, I don't think I'm giving away anything there. Um, just an FYI. It's, it's, it is, I, first of all, I think, thank all the emails, all the speakers, everyone made great points. And, um, as I think most of you know, Bruce and I, not Picky for Bruce, we have a lot of experience in HR and it is always an interesting journey. And we really appreciate the, the public being involved in it and, and, and we'll want more involvement as we go. And so I think if we could take everything we've heard and put it in a basket, including the emails, you start to get a sense, to a degree I do, of, of what we're looking for. And, and, you know, basically it's an extraordinary leader and, uh, city manager with lots of skills and knows and loves Malibu. Um, so I'm not going to go through everything everyone said. I, 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 you know, generally all the points were very, very valid and we hear you loud and clear and we take this as incredibly seriously. And we're not hurrying to get it done. We're trying to do it right. And, um, and we, we have had a lot of applicants. So that's the good news. And I hope and assume that some of those applicants are really that, that, that gem we're, we're waiting for. And, um, it's nice to know that the city of Malibu has such a draw, that people care, that it, it matters to people. And, um, I look forward to seeing the process proceed. So that, that's my thoughts for now. I just really appreciate the public being involved. And please, if you're listening now and you have thoughts, send your emails. Send them now. Um, send them any way you want, to us personally, to the whole city council. Either way, we'll all see them. So if you're listening out on YouTube or wherever you're listening, we want to hear. We really appreciate the emails. It, it does matter and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mikey. Not seeing any hands. Steve, is that you? Are you getting ready to put your hand up?
Yeah, I, I would like to thank all the speakers also. I think they, you know, between the speakers and the emails I've received, I think I've got a reasonably good perspective of what people are looking for. And look, yeah, people, managers are hired every day, right? I mean, we're not like launching space rockets here. We, we've got some goals we've got to get done. We have to understand what we're looking for. I think you've got some smart people on the city council who will, who will focus on making sure that we're putting somebody in place who's really going to help us make this city a better place. So, uh, I look forward to moving forward. Thank you to all the speakers and thank you to the city council. You know, let's get this process cooking and get somebody in there who can help us out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Bruce, thank you for putting your hand up.
You're welcome. So, um, first of all, just echo just about everything everyone here has already said. I, I find it invaluable to know what our residents are looking for. Cause as has been said by a number of people, we, we answer to the residents and, and ultimately the city manager too, even though they're, they're not hired by the residents, they, they answer to the residents. So it's good to hear from the residents. We, we had 11 written public comments. I've read them all. I'm sure the others have. I'm, I'm hoping we'll get more as well, as, as Mikey said. I, I, Karen, I, I, I appreciate very much that you were giving us also your list of qualifications. You know, under the Brown Act, Mikey and I are not allowed to speak to other members of this council about what they're looking for outside of a public meeting. So Steve, I hope actually you'll give us some more comments because I want to hear what you're interested in as well. Because this is the only opportunity that I have to do that. Same thing with you, Paul. Um, Mikey and I have to make some preliminary cuts as part of this committee, I believe, before we as a whole start doing the, the grand interviewing of the finalists, so to speak. So it's, it's really helpful to hear not only from the residents, but also from other council members, what you're looking for. There's, don't seem to be many surprises, but it's still, it's helpful to hear. For what it's worth, I will, I mean, and, and the, the issue of locale, you know, local person, you know, I, I, I hear everybody on that. We hear it all the time. I, I wish there were someone local with all of the qualities that everyone's looking for, that wants the job, that's asked for the job. There, there isn't somebody that's applied. We can't constitutionally base a decision on residency. We're, we're just not allowed to consider where someone lives unless there's something about a job that requires the person's presence in the city, which, which the city manager just does not, unfortunately. So we, we cannot consider that a qual, as a qualification. I am interested in exploring, once we get further in this process with other council members, and I'll just float this, um, the possibility of some kind of a housing allowance separate apart from salary to encourage whoever is best suited for the job to actually decide to live in Malibu while, while having the job. So it's not a qualification. They wouldn't be required to, but I, I'd like some thought given to whether we are willing to do that. Means a little more money, but, um, it, I think it would help whoever that person is get to know the community better. I will say, I, I don't believe it's critical for the city manager coming in to already know Malibu intimately, to already know coastal laws intimately, to already have those connections. What I, what I think, and I, I like Mikey's, um, just off the cuff as he was talking, he said, really for an extraordinary leader. You can't teach extraordinary leadership. Uh, you can't learn extraordinary leadership. I mean, it's, it's something you develop over a lifetime and I, that's what I'm going to be looking for. And I, I think that's really capsulates what all the comments that we received are. I mean, I know some people say it's a must that the person knows us already intimately. I, I'm the most junior member of the council in the, in the terms of residency within Malibu. I think maybe, I may be the most junior person that's been elected before. You know, it, it didn't take me that much difficulty to learn what the, who the residents are, what the residents want here, what's important, what's not important. We actually obviously have some divides and it was interesting Karen's comment about Craig and Craig's comment. You know, that's a divide we have on council as well. Um, I do agree with Craig that finances are not the be-all and end-all. This, this being the paradise that it is, is the, is the be-all and end-all. Finances are clearly necessary and important to get there, but they're not the beginning and end. But in any event, I, I've said more than I need to. Paul and Steve, I hope you'll share your comments because as I said, we're not going to have another opportunity to do that other than once we're in the interview process. So please share as well.
I, I certainly am intending to share, Bruce. Thank you for your comments. Like everybody else, I've, I've read the emails I've gotten about this and a few of them needed responses. And so I've written, I responded with emails and I appreciate the people who spoke today. And I was struck by the, the level of similarity between the, between the emails and the comments that we've heard. And, uh, about half of the, the emails I got really emphasized strongly the necessity for, for, uh, for integrity. And we have, we have, uh, people will only follow somebody who has great integrity. And I think that that's very important and I'm, I'm sure you guys are looking for that. And I can hardly wait until we get to see the shortlist of people or the people who make it through your initial round of, uh, of, of selection. Uh, I think that, uh, while I would love to find somebody who is able to demonstrate everything in the world that's anybody has ever asked for. Uh, unfortunately, I live in the real. Uh, unfortunately, I live in the real world where we take people as they come. And look for someone who is going to be able to. Do the job well and, and work with them because that's, that's what we do in every part of our life. Is we, we, you know. I mean, every now and then I think about my wife agreeing to marry me and I think. You know, I couldn't have been. Perfect for her. Otherwise I wouldn't have had to propose so many times, but you know, we, we all make allowances. And, and it's worked out very well. And I, I don't think we're going to hire somebody who's going to work for us for the next thirty-four years, but. It'd be, it'd be wonderful if we were able to do, get somewhere closer to that. And I'm looking forward to, uh, this going forward. And I, I agree that, that without a, a strong financial. Nobody in the house is happy if the finances are in trouble. And, and nobody in the city is happy when the finances aren't in good shape and we have. We have so many things that we want to do and we, we own so much property that we'd like to do something with for the city of Malibu. And in order to do that, to build those parks, to, to do whatever the community wants, to build an aquatic center. To do those things, we need to have solid finances. And so finances are always important and I'm really grateful. For the, uh, leadership we've had. On the, uh, on the finances and I'm, I'm looking eagerly forward to our meeting in the. The second meeting in November, which will have three meetings in it. That will, uh, break us in a little bit on, on the progress we've made towards, uh, the budget being more balanced. For this year. And I, I think that we can get there, so. That's pretty much it for me. Steve, I see your hand. You decided to rescue me.
Rescue was, was due. Bruce asked, you know, my pers- I'm looking for somebody who's got a track record. Who can come in and demonstrate that they've done stuff. They've made, they've done. They've been to make demonstrable improvements in whatever environment they were dealing with, whether that is. Improving the, you know, the technology that the, of the organizations using. And improving the retention of employees, somebody that can come in and say, I've been there, I've done that. Because I think that's what we need right now. We need somebody who can demonstrate and come in, like hit the ground running. And, and make the right things happen. So track record is important to me. Uh, and, and all the other issues that people have spoken about tonight are also, but. Demonstrating they've been able to do it to me is a big deal, so. Bruce, I hope that helps.
Bruce, I see your hand.
Yeah, a couple of quick comments that I forgot to make for, first of all, i- if anyone out there still wants to provide further comments, please. Send them to all five city council members because again, for Brown Act purposes, once one or two of us learn something. If it's not shared to all, with all of us at the same time in the beginning, we, we can't share it with the others, so. It's, it's helpful if we all get the comments. Um, second, as people know, we, we, we have, I'm, I'm excited about some of the candidates that we've, we've seen the, um, on, on paper. On paper, some of them look really exciting, so, um, I'm, I'm very optimistic. Um, I have a question for John, because some people have asked me this and I, and I don't know the answers. You know, the, the deadline for applying has passed. Is there a legal deadline though? I mean, if somebody were to want to apply tomorrow or next week, are they allowed to? Are we allowed to consider them or is this like when you do bidding and the, the bidding's closed and now we are limited to what we have?
Because we're so stunted, if you're going to reopen the application period for one particular applicant, you should open it for all. And just extend the application period for another two weeks to let anybody who might not have had the chance to apply, apply. That, that would avoid any kind of bias or due process arguments that someone might make in the hiring process and fair housing, uh, fair housing.
Okay, I'm, I'm not suggesting we open it at all. We have, we have a lot of good candidates. All I'm saying is, I, I didn't know what the legality would be if, if, if something came in out of the blue. Whether we're allowed to consider it or whether we have to just put it in the, um.
Someone could challenge, someone could challenge the process. So if there was someone who wanted to apply. If the council felt that there were applicants that didn't, might, that might not have had enough time. I'd suggest just reopening the application period for another week or two to allow. Everyone who might not have had the chance to apply and that way you avoid those arguments.
Okay, yeah, just to be clear, you're not saying you're recommending we do that. You're just saying that if, if someone came in and we wanted to be able to consider them, then we should do that.
Right, exactly.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, um, again, I, 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 and the other thing that Paul, last thing is, you know, again, this is an unusual type of meeting. It's more of like a workshop than a. Than a normal city council meeting. I, I would ask that if any of the, um, particip- the public participants. Want to share anything further now that they've heard us speak, that they'd be given that opportunity. That's something that we rare, that we hardly ever have ever do. Which is something I actually would like to see more of, which is, you know, now they've heard us. Could we hear from them again if they have anything they want to share? Maybe they don't, but if they do, I'd like to give them that opportunity.
Well, if they're watching and they want to call in, Kelsey, can you let us know if you get any calls?
No, I meant the people that are already on the line.
And keeping an eye out for any raised hands. If anyone is looking for the raised hand button in Zoom, it's under the reactions menu.
That's your hand, Bruce. That's all I'm seeing.
Can't say to try.
We have a taker.
We have a taker, Ryan Embry. Ryan, are you in the room?
Yes, I'm, I'm here. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
I, I really wish there were more people in this, involved in this meeting, uh, from the public, but that's the only reason why I'm asking to speak again. I, I looking back at all of the whatever, seven city managers that we've had. Um, starting off with Bruce Fragg and then Ray Taylor and we had David Carmaney. Uh, I mean, it's the, each one has had strengths and. Some of them have had a lot of strengths and the open door policy that David Carmaney held. At City Hall is, was one of those strengths. It fostered communications. Between all the departments, council members and the public. And we're not a big city. This is not a problem and all the locked doors at City Hall and so forth, they kind of shut that down. Um, that's one. The, the other is I was, I was really, and I said this to other council members individually, um. Quite impressed by David Carmaney when he gave his speech, the seven things I did wrong and that was to. A, a whole consortium of emergency response and preparedness. FEMA, I think it was a universal Hilton after the Northridge earthquake and we'd gone through the fire here and you know, there was the fire down in. Uh, Laguna and Altadena and there was the one up north just a year or two before that. And public response and the role of cities and small cities, in particular in agencies, all have a lot to bring. And it was that inter-agency response communications and not trying to look like you're the smartest person in the room. That you got it all covered, that you don't need to know anything. Um, that's not the kind of city manager that we need. We need somebody who is open and fresh, does bring experience and I would say really. Should be a city manager and stop this hiring of non-city managers, uh, please. The best city managers we've had have all been city managers before somewhere else. And, and I think the public knows that, so we're watching. You know, we heard what you said. You want people who bring experience as city managers. And don't make mistakes that are novice mistakes of somebody who's not been a city manager. Let them make those mistakes somewhere else, please. Thank you. And then hire them if they've, you know, done a good job for several years, as Steve has said, but thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Ryan. I see Karen raised her hand and then Howard Rutske.
Okay, um, are we just going in the order that we raise our hands or are we taking public comments before us?
And you can let Howard go first if you'd like, but I was going to go in the order that you raised your hands.
Okay, I'll, I'll make it brief and maybe this has already been stated, um, and I don't remember. Um, but to the ad hoc committee members. I'm not sure what the process, are you planning on putting forward a certain number of finalists? To the whole council or are you going to put the whole list? In front of us? Uh, how, how do we see this moving ahead? Either of you or John Cotty.
I'm, I'm happy to respond unless council member, uh, Silverstein or Pearson wants to go. Um, the, uh, recruiter Bill Avery is going through the list. Doing a preliminary check of references and backgrounds is going to bring. A recommended list to the ad hoc committee. They'll go through those and recommend some, some interviews. Um, the council will see all of the candidates. Um, and we'll have the opportunity to select others that it may want to interview as well, so. Um, you're not going to be precluded from looking at any particular candidate. Either by way of background or by way of interview.
And is that everybody who Avery and Associates has received? Uh, a, a resume from or?
I'm told that you will get all materials from all candidates.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, Howard, you made it to the front of the line. Are you there?
Aren't I lucky?
You are truly lucky to have our attention.
You know, I think that every day. Uh, three things. Um, that one I forgot to mention is. We've had city managers that back up staff a hundred percent. Some have not. And the staff works unbelievably hard. And there's probably a lot Mr. Cotty and others would be upset if I said, but. I know firsthand how hard they work and how hard they've helped. In difficult situations and I think it's imperative they know the leader backs them up a hundred percent. The next thing like brute, what, um, Steve said. The proof is if they've done huge things in other cities. You know, that's the definitive decider, you know, if they've done it, they've done it. If they haven't, they haven't and. I think you can see in a leader's past. Definitive milestones of greatness. And we definitely need greatness. And I agree with whoever said they need to hit the ground running. Because we have a lot of issues here right now. And there's no learning curve time, so thank you again for the time.
Thank you, Howard. Mikey, you're in the front of the line at this point.
Boy, I think, um. I'm just going to sort of respond to Karen on her comment about, maybe already sort of done, but. I think typical of any hiring process where there, you know, a good pool of applicants. Yeah, you'll be great to see them all, but I think. You know, listening to all the speakers, listening to the city council, there's no doubt that some just rise to the top. And, um, luckily there seems to be a nice pool of people that, that rise. And, uh, and somewhere, not that other people aren't great, it's just. It's, we got a fairly clear path on what the fit is. And, um, and I'm sure there's some gems there that maybe we'll never quite figure out and that's why we hired an expert to help us. Um, who does done this for city after city after city and understands how it works. So, um, you know, that's money well spent, you know, to have somebody helping with that process that, that knows. You know, has an idea of who we are and what we want, so. Uh, I look forward, once again, I just wanted to add a little context to Karen's point and, uh, points and, uh, look forward to the process moving forward.
Thank you. Any other comments, Bruce? Your, your yellow light just came now. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
That's why I was putting my, taking my mute off. I'll move to adjourn.
A second emotion.
Yes, if you're ready for a roll call, Mayor Proton Silverstein.
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fair.
Yes.
Councilmember Yaring.
Yes, and thank you to all the speakers.
Mayor Grisanti.
Yes.
Motion carries. You are adjourned.
And thanks to everybody in the meeting and everybody who wrote in. Thank you.